I'm asking, and I wish things could have been done different. And maybe some changes need to be made, but it doesn't have to be like this. I don't know if Jeff and Noel will be able to make it here tonight. But they are old, and in some of the emails in there, I believe it was stated somewhere, why can't we wait till they just die? And I'm asking that question. Why can't, there's a lot of people involved in this that are very elderly. Why can't we just let them live out the years they got left? In peace? And I'll leave it at that. Thank, thank all of you.
My name is Rhonda Rogers. I live on Stratsman Lane. And when my husband and I first moved to where I live now, we were in the county. That's what we preferred. We did not want to be part of either city. However, Rogers was going to try to annex us. So we asked Cave Springs to annex us because we did not want to be in Rogers. I haven't changed my mind. And I was told that we were going to be part of Cave Springs. I feel like that was a promise made to us. And now you're reneging on it. Thank you.
My name is Belva Jones. My husband Jeffrey Jones would be here tonight, but he's, he's at work. And I believe he sent out a, an email to you all to let you know that he is against this. We live on Wallace Road. So that does affect us. The only reason I knew, or we knew that our land was even up for this was because my mom texted me and said, hey, does this affect you? And I was like, well, I don't think so. I hadn't heard anything, but we were wrong. And basically, I just want to say, we've, we've lived there since the late eighties. West Wallace Road was dirt. If we had two or three cars go by a day, that was a lot. Now we kind of jokingly call it the Cave Springs Speedway. But anyway, we raised our voice there. We, a long time ago, when the annexation was taking place with probably Shadow Valley and all of the things that had, has built up around us to, we were approached by a couple of ladies. And they said, do you want to, do you want to stay in Rogers? You want to be in Rogers or do you want to be in Cave Springs? We said, we want to be in Cave Springs. We love Cave Springs. The small community, the ladies, I can't add anything to what Shannon has brilliantly put together. But just to let you know that we greatly value, especially since my husband works EMS and has been on Cave Springs Volunteer Fire Department in the past. We're very proud of that. We do believe, and one thing that he wanted me to bring up was that seems like a priority for Cave Springs would be to spend that 1.7 million dollars for a ladder truck. And to support our police department. So we, I just want to say that we oppose this greatly. And we do appreciate, we appreciate everyone who serves Cave Springs. The police officers, EMS, everything, they've worked very hard through the years. And I can tell you from experience that it is the, the volunteer people and now the paid people that go back, the chiefs, Chief Tony, all of those, everyone has always been very professional, very efficient. And it's just been a great community to be with them. We want to, we want to stay with it. We don't want to, we grew up in Rogers, but we're Cave Springsers now, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Martha Gonzalez-Michelis. We live in Stratsman Lane. We're new to Cave Springs, just a few years. We love it. We were not informed about anything like that. It said Shannon informed us and we opposed to the swap.
Is there anyone else from the Cave Springs side that's going into Rogers? Okay. Anyone else? In general?
I'm going to change the order that I read this a little bit, so I might fumble it and apologize.
Start with.
My name is Alec Ginsberg. I want to share one reason that I feel apprehensive about becoming part of Cave Springs. And I, I said I want to reorder this because of what we just heard. Witnessing the possibility of Cave Springs residents collectively owning over 100 acres of property being given up to Rogers for no good reason. If this detachment happens and we are subsequently forced into Cave Springs, I will forever question our place in this city. What if a new opportunity arises? Will we be sacrificed for the next shiny object? I've never in my life felt concerned that municipal governments might put me in this position. And I'll start my original. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge and apologize for any actions or words that may have been written in an email or spoken on the phone or in a meeting by any of my fellow residents. It is inappropriate, unkind, and not how we should be treating each other. We should be respectful and genuine, especially when discussing matters that deeply impact our community. It is crucial that we approach these conversations with respect and understanding. We can disagree, we can debate, and our views will not always align. But we should be able to do this in a respectful way. After all, many of us will continue to live in this general vicinity for years to come as neighbors and as friends. I know that this hearing tonight is intended to be an opportunity for Cave Springs City Council to hear the opinions and concerning, I'm sorry, to hear the opinions concerning the proposed detachment. And that's what I like to focus on. As you've heard, most landowners currently in Cave Springs that are affected by this proposal do not support it. I've heard from people like Shannon Stanton and John Rakes, that are two new friends of mine that I've gotten to know, and they both have expressed their concerns against this detachment. For the record, I've now found one person in favor of this. It is evident that Rogers has made up their mind. They do not want Scissor Tail. Conversely, Cave Springs appears determined to annex Scissor Tail regardless of the potential risks and downsides this could pose to Cave Springs. This risk could be amplified in the event of an economic downturn or developer changing their mind about planned funding. It is imperative for the city of Cave Springs to stay true to its values and its residents. The council should vote no on the proposed detachment of the land from Cave Springs because most of those residents wish to remain part of Cave Springs. This approach appears to still result in a favorable outcome where Rogers will probably still allow Cave Springs to annex Scissor Tail and the surrounding lands, even if you vote no, leading to a win-win with the city of Cave Springs. This has been an eye-opening experience for me. While I still think you should repeal ordinance 2024-04, I think it is more important that you vote no to protect your existing residents. If this all passes and I become a Cave Springs resident, I would like to participate in the government, maybe to run as mayor, to take the things that have happened and to really focus on what the residents want. And I think that's the thing why people have become so upset is they felt like they were not given an opportunity to know about it or to feel heard before it was stand up here in front of a clock and not have any conversation. And I understand that's not the point of the public hearing, to have the back and forth dialogue. That's just me wanting to share my opinion as to why I think that there's a lot of people that are upset because I feel unheard. Thank you for listening and I appreciate that you allowed me to go over a little bit.
I'm Lori Jackson. I live on Hatbury Lane in Scissor Tail. And I wanted to jump up real quick because I wasn't at the meeting last Tuesday because I was at the meeting in Rogers. And I was doing what these residents are doing, pleading with them to not detach us. What I wanted to say is, what I saw was I saw notes being taken from y'all. I saw eye contact. I saw you shaking your heads, listening. We did not get that in Rogers. And so I applaud you for that, that you care, that you have concern for your citizens. And that, I just wanted to say that because I felt so unheard when I left Rogers. I walked out of there just going, they could care less about us. We're just, we mean nothing to them. And what I see is that your residents obviously mean something to you. I saw you, even you were shaking your, you know, you, you, you want your, your, the citizens that have been here for years. They're the backbone of your community. And I appreciate that you at least listen to them and that you care and that you're taking notes, you hear what they're saying. I love that. I love, I watched you write down things. They didn't, you know, Rogers did not give us that synchronicity, so I applaud you for that.
Come back. Neil Clemens, Scissor Tail moved to this area four years, in fact, it's coming up in four years. I want to thank you. All of you have a pen in your hand. And as our previous speaker said, nobody in Rogers took a single note. My dad taught me something about active listening. You engage with your eyes, you engage with your hands, and you really try to understand where the speaker's coming from. And you've all demonstrated that, not only here tonight, but in previous sessions. And I want to thank you for that. You're all good people, and Cave Springs has a lot of good people. I enjoy going to the shops around here. People are friendly, they take time, they ask me how I'm doing, they remember me when I come back. All good people, a lot of good people here tonight that are expressing a comment or two about why they're against this. One of the, this is a Freedom of Information Act email from Bill Watkins to, to John Prusak. I think Bill is your lawyer. If I'm not mistaken, Bill is a lawyer, these are two lawyers. But he said Cave Springs is not interested in going, giving up land when they, that they know is owned by folks who would object to being in Rogers. Can we just proceed with my little lady's piece and wait until these others die before we move this land over? I think that that is a very important point, that if people are not in favor of something, that you give them the respect, listen to them, and understand where they're coming from. Everybody in Cave Springs chose to move or live in Cave Springs. Everybody in Scissor Tail chose to move or build or live in Scissor Tail. These are our homes. These are the choices that we made two years, four years, 40 years ago with where we want to live. You all are subject to a request from Rogers. This didn't start over here, this started in Rogers. Mayor Hines was faced with a lawsuit. He was trying to get out from under that lawsuit. And he came to you and he said, let's do a deal. And you all said, wow, this sounds amazing. It sounds amazing until you listen to the citizens of the two communities that are affected. And then I hope you scratch your heads and say, is this the right thing? Are we being forthright in our thinking? We've yet to hear a full accounting of what this is going to cost. I've been to the meetings and I hear numbers, 11 million, 5 million, 400,000, 450,000. Mark's not, I think it's Mark, is not here tonight, but he, at the first meeting, he said, I'd like to see everything on one piece of paper. What are the costs? What are the expected revenues? How do we pay for this? Are we going out on a limb to go and going too far, given your new fire truck, you're over budget on your, on your community center? Going to be a nice center, but the reality is, everything's over budget these days. And looking at the current economy and the inflation rate, we're looking at 4% plus percent inflation rate going forward. So any numbers you put together, look out five or 10 years, add 4% every year before you make those decisions. But I want to thank you again. I would like to apologize if anybody in our neighborhood said something that was disrespectful. You're all good people. You have good people in the community. And I please ask, stop this. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Aiken. Apparently I live in Rogers, even though my address is Bentonville. I would like to start with an apology to all of you. I understand, like many of us have said, that y'all received some unkind, harshly worded emails or phone calls, or maybe even direct confrontations, I don't know. I'm sorry. There's no excuse for unkindness or rudeness. Why in the world would you even consider annexing us after the treatment you've received from some folks? I don't know. I have a big speech, I'm not going to do it because I think you're listening to your Cave Springs, your current Cave Springs residents, and I appreciate you doing that. And please listen to them. Their opinion is very important, and they don't want to be detached. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Jeff Spieliers, I live in Rogers. At the last meeting, one of your citizens, Cave Springs citizens who is here tonight, part of what he said was, in essence, if no one in Cave Springs is for this, and no one in Rogers is for this, what are we doing? And I thought that was such a great way to phrase it. And I've, I've thought a lot about what are we doing here with this? And it's possible we'll never know the full truth of why we're here and how we got here. But there are a few things that we do know. And that includes what was covered at the April meeting, including that you all have been conducting a water loss survey here in the city. And the report was, if I got it all right in the notes, at that point, 25 of 44 miles of water line had been inspected. The report was there were at least 39 leaks of water, but some of those leaks were large enough, as I understood it, they might mask other leaks. So there's at least 39 leaks of water. The report was, the city is losing 151 gallons per minute of water, which translates to 6.7 million gallons per month of water, which by my rough math is about 150,000 bathtubs per month of water loss out of the city's system. And yet, the proposal now is to spend millions of dollars of taxpayer money to extend utilities, extend water lines to a neighborhood, Scissor Tail, that already has utilities. The necessary water lines, as I understand it, would include 1,250 feet of water line on Roberts Road and another 2,000 feet of water line to Scissor Tail. That's 3,250 more feet of water line despite currently losing 150,000 bathtubs of water per month. Respectfully, I don't believe that's a good use of taxpayer money. And what occurred to me is, if my home had serious issues, pick the issue, water leaks, roof issues, foundation issues, the last thing I think I would say to my spouse in that moment is, honey, I think we should borrow money and add on. Right? That would be completely unreasonable to be focused on borrowing money to add on to the home when there are serious problems that exist in that moment. It just doesn't make sense. And that's really what's being proposed here, spending millions of taxpayer money to add on when there's really a crisis right now relative to the water line. Again, what are we doing here is, is really a pertinent question, I think. The last thing I would say is this, I'm here in my personal capacity, but my day job is as an attorney. I've read the land swap statutes and the annexation statutes, and we're obviously here because those statutes require a public hearing. And what that tells me as a lawyer is that the legislature was making clear to you all and of all of us that the public opinion, the voice of the citizens, very much matters, or else there would be no requirement for a public hearing. I personally know of one impacted citizen who's in favor of this land swap, and she lives in Cave Springs, as I understand it, would like to go to Rogers. Last thing I would say is that if the law is to mean anything at all, the law that we're here under pursuant to tonight, this swap just cannot proceed because the public, who you represent as elected officials, we are overwhelmingly opposed to the land swap. So we would ask for you to repeal this ordinance and not move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Just got them, so apologize if it takes a minute. My name's Jason Zunwald. I recently just emailed MC Mike, Jeremy, Erica, Mike, Nidjolun lives in, yeah, Mark, and JJ, some emails and that you probably should read to understand what you're all dealing with. So I started off with hopefully some, a little bit of levity to this. So I'm going to start with a quote from the, one of the greatest artists around, Jon Bon Jovi, right? Nothing is as important as passion. No matter what you do with your life, be passionate. That's what you're hearing tonight, is people being passionate about what's happening to their lives. Right? So I'm going to ask for a little bit of leeway in the three minutes. I come here with passion for a 10-year-old. It's not my son, he's my bonus child. And I love him like, like somebody. I married his mother, well, about 4 months. After we dated 15 years ago, we broke up. She went on and had two children, one child that I'm speaking to, Brooks, has Down Syndrome and is nonverbal. I personally, with Angie's assistance, have driven from our house, not in Scissor Tail, but in Bentonville, to the Children's Medical Center, Children's Medical, whatever hell she calls it, it's down in the spring dump for children, over 100 miles an hour just to get there because his blood oxygen level was below 90. That right there is instant calling ambulance. I told her in the middle of the night, we're not doing it, we're going. We were there for literally two weeks with him, having double pneumonia. This is not about the fire chief, not about the police chief, they are gray people. It's about a possible mutual agreement, and I'm not willing to bet on my 10-year-old son, his life, his emergency needs when it comes down to who's going to come, when I, when I, when he needs help. Hell, he even pulled the fire alarm at Mobius twice, and the fire trucks across the street still took minutes to get over there because he's nonverbal, he has autism, he has Down Syndrome, he doesn't tell you what's going on. He literally last week had an incident in the morning where he relieved himself multiple times, had no idea what was going on. Later that night, sitting there making his lovely cheese, cheese pizza that he often asks for almost every day, pulled his tooth out. He had a toothache. Because he's nonverbal, he can't tell you what's going on. Right? We literally went to Little Rock so he could have 17-fold. Because that's how much he has issues with telling you what's going on and then having mouth, you know, mouth problems. I again ask you for the more leeway. You know what? I listen to Mr. Rakes, listen to Sin Stan's, and it makes me think of again, a couple other songs. Montgomery Gentry, "My Town," right? This is my town, where I come from, where I've been, where I was raised, where I keep all my yesterdays, where I ran and off when I got mad, came to poison my old man, will I come back and settle down? This is where I want to put me in the ground. I'm sure these people feel that way. This is what they've been doing for 30 some odd years, if not longer. They want to live in your city, and you're telling them, peace out, go to Rogers. You probably want to think about that a little more. I really, really hope that you think about this a lot more. Also, the issue with why we're here, Jeremy, I appreciate that, what you emailed back and forth today, we didn't know what was going on. I had no idea that Bob David, who's in attendance tonight, was suing under three flags the city of Rogers Utilities. No idea. I bought a home, spent close to, you know, X amount of dollars, no idea. Here I am, six months later, in front of you all, asking what the heck's going on? Why are we getting moved? Bob suing the city of Rogers for water. So what happens? February, I believe, the 19th, let me double check my email, I'll be done here in a minute, I promise. There's an email from Mr. Watkins, who was, I believe Neil spoke up a minute ago about him. On February 13th, Rogers, Randy, Mayor of Cave Springs, John Randy, has someone he's ready to meet and appropriate representative of Rogers on this subject about this land swap. This was 2/19. Pardon me, am I correct on the date? 2/13. Bob's lawsuit from the city of Arkansas, his court date did not get approved to the 19th. So how are they having conversations about a land swap before it's even going to court in October? Makes you wonder, wonder what happened in the background. My buddies are attorneys. They fight each other in court all the time, and they talk about it. They go meet for drinks, cigars, make out a deal before they get to court. Sounds like that may have happened in the States as well. So I end, hopefully, hopefully with something that can bring some levity, a little more levity and some understanding. Please, we respect what you're doing, we respect that we know what you're hopefully going to do, what's right for those people that want to be in this town. Do not let a snake oil salesman sell you lies. I've seen you 11 cases of court documents that this gentleman's been involved in. You have, you have the court cases, you know what it's all about, all from bankruptcy, foreclosure, fraud, all from one person that's in this room, is making promises to you all. Read it through, understand who you're dealing with. Thank you.
My name's Mark Boyer. I live in Scissor Tail, and I wasn't going to talk. But I just moved here after retiring. And I bought a home and built a home in the city of Rogers in Scissor Tail because I wanted to live there. I didn't want to live in Cave Springs. I would have bought a home here if I wanted to live here, or I would have built here. These people that are residents of Cave Springs want to live in Cave Springs. I have not heard a single person express support for this suspicious activity where emergencies were declared in both the city of Rogers and Cave Springs council meetings, I think to hide what was happening from these people. They're saying no. I'm saying no. You represent the people. You do not represent developers, you do not represent the city of Rogers, you do not represent anybody that's filing a lawsuit. You represent these people. You have to vote the way they tell you to vote. Thank you.
Hello. My name is DeeDee Moore. I don't know how to make it work. Thank you so much. Hi. My name is DeeDee Moore, and I believe I am the only one in favor of the land swap that is here. So for me, it is a huge benefit. I have had a business, Faithful Friends Animal Clinic, in Cave Springs for the past 16 years. And it has become an issue I do need to access sewer. Now, I would love also to stay at Cave Springs, but as you can see on the map, we all know what the map looks like. I am at the far reaches of Cave Springs. And so I had a conversation with Mr. Noblet in February, actually, because I said, you know, I'm going to have to divorce Cave Springs in order to get sewer through Rogers eventually. Because he had said to me, you know, at the outset, it would probably be two years before we could get sewer there. Now, having said that, because one of the people from Scissor Tail misconstrued, Rogers has not also been able to give me sewer because I am in, and just surrounded by farmland. So if I were to access into Rogers up until now, I would have had to have paid for the sewer myself and were to develop the easement. and work to develop the easements, or get the granted easements myself as well. So I think all of the cities in Northwest Arkansas, not just Rogers, Cave Springs, all of them are having growing pains. It is difficult. The growth in Northwest Arkansas is astronomical. I grew up in Fayetteville, so, you know, at times, I'm also horrified by the expansion of this area. But having said that, it would benefit me. Now, I, I do understand Scizertail's fears and concerns for the future, but I can say that I have nothing but positive interaction with Cave Springs. I loved being part of Cave Springs, and I'm gonna miss Cave Springs if this land swap goes through, but I do need sewer. Having said that, I look forward to a relationship with Rogers as well. I don't think that these two cities would enter into this agreement without planning and foresight and knowledge that it would work out in the future. So I think, for me, I'm hoping the land swap does go through, and I hope that for all of you, it gets a benefit. I, I feel most sorry for the people in Cave Springs, the little rural community that's still an island in this area, because it is such a sad thing, but to that extent, it's happening all over. And just to say one final thing, I, I guess I never looked at the divisions between cities. Obviously, we have to get our utilities from one town or the other, but we're all part of Northwest Arkansas, and it's a great community, whether you're in Springdale, Fayetteville, Fayetteville Rogers, Tunny Town, Cave Springs. It's all a great place, and I think for the future, it's gonna be a great place. So thank you.
Unfortunately, a little bit taller, not much. Ron Shepard, Scizertail. Just, also wasn't planning on speaking, but a couple things that I'd like to echo, that I think you heard from residents of both cities tonight. One is, both cities have fantastic things, right? Personally, one of our favorite coffee shops, right here in Joy House, phenomenal things. The point is, we made a choice. We're part of a growing pains, coming here from out of state, to work for a company that you might have heard of, right? And we made that choice two years ago, to move into our community, like so many others have. And so, for me, I think the biggest thing here is that, the point is, if we can't rely on local government to be the voice of the people, it's really frightful, especially in an election year, when we gotta go vote for representation at the highest federal level. It's supposed to be a representation and a government of the people. And so, I've always hoped that local government would be kind of the last ones to hold on to that, to be the voice of the people. And so I'm just asking, and appreciate all the time you've taken tonight, to hear from the communities, that you represent that and be the voice of the people here. Thank you.
Hello again, I'm Hugh Jackson, I'm one of the ER doctors and around, so I'm happy to make your acquaintance. Again, I want to say thank you, too. I want to say, just what's been said, echo so many things here. Your jobs are hard, and in some ways, I'm sure we've made it harder, and so for that, I'm sorry. My job's a hard job. Illness doesn't follow rules, and it's a hard job, but I love it. I do, I love it. I don't know if I'm any good at it, but I love it. Here's the thing I would say. I had, what I have, I did not come from medicine. In fact, there was nobody in medicine in my family. Or any aspect of that, for that matter. I come from my grandpa, who lived near a community of 5,000 in Kennesaw, Nebraska. So Cave Springs would be the destination. I mean, it's going to New York City from where he lived. He was a farmer. He never hardly went into town at all, unless he had to. And when he did, that was the town he went into. He might go to Hastings, Nebraska, right? When he was, when we were visiting. So I came from the big city of Texarkana, right? So we thought we were really cosmopolitan. My point is to say this, what I found out about my grandpa, is that he could do anything. These folks, Cave Springs, man, I'm hearing my grandpa all over the place. They can do anything, and they do anything. And that takes me to where I was, and that took me to where I am. I am where I am, whether that's good or bad, because of what my grandpa did, because of the examples that he set, right? They called him Banny Rooster, because he was a very short man. He could play almost anything, he could do almost anything. And the reason they called him that is he was very determined. A loving guy, he wouldn't, he would never get up here and say a thing, unless it was about his family or his land. And then he would come up and he'd say the very things that you've said, and you've said, and all these dear people have said. It's like, it is not just our homes, it's not a group of people that have or have not, whatever you consider. It's about the essence of what we are, our safety, our homes. And certainly, in your community here, these people, it's like my grandpa, they have land, it isn't just land. And it isn't really just lifestyle. It's their blood, and their sweat, and their tears, and that means so much more than any dollar bill, any of us could ever say anything. And although I love Dr. Moore, she's right, she's, in fact, our pets, she's, was a wonderful veterinarian. I miss the fact that she's retired there. We still have our pets there, and I would encourage you to all go there. They're terrific, they're loving and wonderful. But that is a business, she doesn't live there. I live in my home. And my grandpa lived on his farm, never in his life, he's gone now many years, never in his life would he have ever stood for this. I'm asking you, first of all, not to look at this as a have or have not, not to look at this as anything other than what it is. It is blood, sweat, and tears, more than livelihood of your family here. They're asking you, please represent us. I'll stop talking. Be Banny Rooster, right? For him, doesn't matter the size, be the strength that you are, representing the people that are so much stronger than any house could ever be. I would ask this, and once again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for listening to us tonight. I'm so excited to be here. I've been to every meeting, but I have not gotten up until tonight. And I had the opportunity. I'm sorry, Diane Collins. I live in Scizertail. We have retired here, built our last home, and chose Scizertail because of the community there, and I had the opportunity to talk to Erica at the last, after the last meeting. And something that she said to me really struck me, and that was that, that the Scizertail people that live there, most of them either work for Walmart or another vendor, and would be gone in two years, so it really wasn't their homes. But most of the people that I have met in Scizertail have retired there. Many of us have retired there. This is where we've come to be close to our grandchildren, because our grandchildren live here. And for all of that to be pulled out, I've lived in five states. Most of them, most of the cities I've lived in have been big cities. This is the first small city I've moved to. And this just never crossed my mind that this could happen, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't have moved here. I wouldn't have, I would have stayed in Dallas. That's where we moved from. I've worked my entire life so that I could build this home that I live in now. And I just can't even believe this is happening, all because of one man that's sitting in the back row. He doesn't even live here. He lives in Tulsa. So why are we doing all of this to benefit this man who doesn't even live here? I don't understand that. And we've tried to get answers, but of course, no one's telling us anything. So I do appreciate you listening tonight, because it matters to all of us. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Angie Zumwalt. I live on Fort Tull Trace in Scizertail. I built a home eight months ago in Scizertail with my husband and my two kids. And during the April meeting, I shared with you guys how we moved into our home because of the proximity to the fire station, because of the paramedics and the emergency services that we could get quickly and closely, because our son, who's 10 years old, happens to have Down Syndrome, and happens to have a whole lot of medical complications. We would be here all day if I told you all of them. But I wanted to reiterate the importance of that. The level of care that we receive matters. It matters to everyone here in our neighborhood, it really matters to my son. Proximity to the fire station and emergency services is the reason why we built our forever home where we did. And the proximity matters, because in cases like his, seconds matter. Whether it's elopement and trying to locate him, whether he's gone towards the retention pond behind our house, or a neighbor's pool, or the community pool, or any other number of very scary things, because he can't swim, or it's a choking incident, or low oxygen levels at 2:00 AM that require ambulatory care, and intervention en route to the hospital. Those seconds matter, and you can bet that minutes matter even more. So right now, to the Rogers Fire Station, we are station number eight. It's five minutes away from our home. To Cave Springs, it's eight minutes. That's an additional three minutes of care that matter when there's elopement, or choking, or low oxygen levels. Those seconds can mean the difference between life and death. Someone shared here earlier that a picture is worth a thousand words, and I happen to bring pictures. These pictures, I hate to think what would have happened if three minutes were, if it was three minutes longer. So this is him in the NICU. He was born three weeks early, and was born not breathing. Needed five minutes of CPR, and was told that he was gonna have brain damage. And he was in the NICU for 18 days, it was a very, very long 18 days. Or pictures like this one. This was, he had bronchiolitis. He was super, super sick, we were in the hospital for a week. Here, I can't even remember which occasion this was. This one, he had pneumonia. This one, he had double pneumonia. Here, he's getting a breathing treatment, they're basically taking a vest to pound his lungs to try to get his lungs to be able to breathe better, and the liquid out of his, of his lungs, so that he can function and be able to go home. All of these instances, three minutes would have made a big difference. And I am so grateful that we're not telling that story of what those differences could have made for him. Right now, he's a happy, healthy boy, today, could change tomorrow, literally, with choking. This is him getting his Special Olympics medals a few weeks ago, at Special Olympics Area 3. And he loves what he does. He's a regular, regular boy, loves to ride his bike, and play soccer, and play Miracle League baseball, and do all the things that we all wish that our kids could do, but the medical complications make that harder. And I'm just a mom, trying to keep her son alive, and we're all vulnerable, though, to that response time. It impacts every single person in our neighborhood. I want you guys to consider what it would feel if this were your house. If this were your lifetime investment of 30-plus years of working hard and saving to build your forever home, to a place that's safe for your children, and then you ended up being a pawn in someone else's game, and what that would feel like. I want you to consider repealing the ordinance to the swap, and please vote no. Thank you so much for your time.
Good to see you guys, I'm Brad Scott, living in Cave Springs. I was at last week's hearing, or public hearing, and just shocked me by how the guys said, I mean, there were so many people said, the city council didn't hear anything they said. They emailed them, called them, never heard a response, and I'm just glad you guys hear us. And I know the public hearing is a requirement, but are you required to move forward with this, whether you believe it's right or wrong? That's what I'm wondering. But thank you guys for doing this.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Kim Lopez, and I am a resident of Rogers and Scizertail affected by the land swap. When we moved into Scizertail in November of 2022, one of the first things that we did was come to the Cave Springs Holiday Market, where we met many kind people, and were happy to support local business. Our son was not that enthused about Santa, but we don't have time for that this evening. And we've met many people who share our values of honesty, integrity, and service that were instilled in us growing up in northeastern Oklahoma. But we've also been disappointed at how our lives have been negatively affected by growth at all costs, as Dr. DeeDee mentioned earlier, such as an inconsiderate developer in the subdivision behind us, raining ash on our properties from their debris burn, to our own developer needing to recuse themselves from our POA to represent their own interests, to a hit-and-run vehicle accident caused by criminals in our community who were never caught, and now our elected officials in Rogers who are not listening to us. And as others have said, I already, I appreciate that you all are actively engaged in listening to us and taking notes, and, and that's why we're here. Because when elected officials truly represent their people, actions are transparent, and consider public input before decisions are made. And you still have an opportunity to listen to Ms. Stanton and the other Cave Springs residents, who wish to remain as such, along with all of us possible soon-to-be constituents. Our voices have been dismissed by our own city council, so that's why we're pleading with you to listen, because we believe that you will. To me, it seems clear that the city of Rogers motivation is to rid the city and Rogers Water of the Three Flags lawsuit, since the 80-acre parcel is a requirement of the land swap agreement. But that's not a sufficient motive to abandon nearly 1,000 residents who already live there. We have yet to hear the emergency that merits an expedited process with minimal time for due diligence and public feedback. So I would just ask that if you and your citizens truly believe this land swap could be in your best interest, repeal it now, and then revisit it through the full vetting process with a vote in the future. By now, you've likely viewed the financials to see that any property tax revenue gained by adding Scizertail and future subdivisions will likely be offset with the increased cost for infrastructure maintenance and emergency services. If there's a plan for commercial development that would expand sales tax revenue, why not share that now? That would help all of us understand how this serves both the residents of Rogers and Cave Springs. And I'd just like to ask you to consider the outsized influence that Scizertail will have by increasing your population by nearly 20% overnight. We're an active and engaged community, and thus far, our interests have not been represented. It's important to mention, one thing that has not been mentioned tonight is school safety. While it sounds like emergency and fire services in Cave Springs are committed professionals, they have not yet managed comprehensive school safety. And those departments have already identified equipment and staffing needs to serve existing residents. If I understand correctly, Cave Springs would also no longer support the school resource officer previously provided by Rogers? That's, is that correct? Or it's incorrect? Okay, so Cave Springs will support the school resource officer, that is great to hear. Thank you for confirming that information. So similar to the financials, I would just want more time to see a full strategic plan and budget for school safety. Each time we visit Joy House Coffee, or the Cave Springs Post Office, or drive past all the beautiful land available, we see the potential for a fully revitalized downtown and a really vibrant and thoughtfully grown community. I know you have intelligent, thoughtful, and creative leaders who can articulate a vision for growth on your own terms. You still have an opportunity to change the course of our future and your legacy, and I implore, I implore you to repeal- implore, I implore you to repeal this land swap. Thank you for your time.
My name is Tammy Walker. We live in Cave Springs just since November of 2023. We live in Allen's Mill. And we live in Allen's Mill Two, which backs up to a parcel of land that I would, I didn't, I didn't think I was going to speak, so I'm not very well prepared. I apologize. And I may show my ignorance. I also thought we were going to be able to ask questions here, so there's a lot of things I don't know that maybe have already been discussed. But I attended a meeting in May where a company, HHC, had a 40 acres off of Wallace Road that they wanted to have re, what would be the word there? Re-zoned. And you guys, I see some new faces. I see many of the faces that were here in May, listened to the people surrounding that parcel of land who were opposed to it for many different reasons. And HHC had said they would come back and do traffic studies and other studies. And now all of a sudden, that parcel of land is going to be in the Rogers district or, or proposed to be in the Rogers. And I'm confused since we backed up to that property. Now we have no say as to what's going to go on that parcel land. It may be wonderful. I don't know. It may be beautiful. But I, it's just interesting to me that they were turned down last May. Now all of a sudden, I understand they're a different name with a different, perhaps a different partner and they're going to work with Rogers. And is that because Cave Springs turned them down? So because we have a brand-new house, I'm quite concerned about what's going to be adjoining my neighborhood. And I would like to say that I am also opposed to this for that reason and for many of the other reasons that affect so many others. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Booth from Scissor Tail. It was kind of sad coming here at the last meeting. There was a lot of frustration, a lot of tension between some things that non-citizens of Cave Springs were sharing that you guys expressed what seems to be that you were signing up for a little bit of a mess with this. That's complicated and difficult. I'm left with a big question. If the idea of closing the gap between the north part of Cave Springs and this south part has been floating around for over 10 years, why wasn't it done 10, eight years ago before there were 1,000 people involved, before it got messy? Are there other options for generating new revenue and growth that are not this messy? That don't have this many things on a list of unknowns? I appreciate that you've taken the time to listen to us. I really hope that some risk assessment really gets a thorough assessment. And that, you know, when, if you take the component of time out of this and you look back at your legacy of being in the city council or as mayor, to look at what was accomplished and was it done through things that were done in the shadows or was it done in matter in an approach that was clear and focused and took risk out? Thank you.
Hey guys, Mark Suits, Scissor Tail. I feel this is a foregone, foregone conclusion for most of you. I don't think you guys have the financials all buttoned up. You can make it work, but I can also buy the Yellow Pages or a phone book company and I can make that work, but is it a good investment? No one uses them anymore. Probably not a good idea. If I asked you guys, should I buy it? Probably say no. I couldn't, I could make it work though. I can get a bond, I can get a loan. This is the problem you guys are facing is you guys are trying to build a connection and that's bigger than anything in your mind and you're going to make it work. It's not the right idea, especially with thousands of people that you're affecting. Now you had your lawyer who had said the council didn't want to displace Cave Springs residents that don't want to move, right? We have that. POA, all that stuff, every frustration that has been brought on this is all from frustration because of lack of information, timeliness responses, understanding of financial that I've asked for, MC's asked for. I'm, I'm, Mark's not here, but he flicks on Facebook all the time. I don't know, $11 million isn't a big enough problem for him, but the fact is you guys all said to your attorney, hey, we don't want to do this for the residents that don't want to move. Now the other side of the coin, the other attorney said, well, can we just make my little part work and then we'll figure out when they die, right? Not your attorney, not, not Cave Springs, another gentleman unprofessionally said that, right? But you made a stand not to move your residents that didn't want to move. But now you have a shiny object and you're like, well, honestly, don't really care. Same with family. Everything you do, you don't need anything from us. We just want to be left alone. Don't care. Move on. And us, you want to take on the people who frustrate you, who make false statements and accusations maybe that I can't speak to. That's not who I am. Hopefully you guys know that. But you'd rather take them in to make sure that you can connect something rather than looking at all these residents that are telling you, we don't want this. We don't have a say. You guys get the vote. But nonetheless, you guys sit here and go, oh, financials look great. You don't even know what the financials look like. You'll make it work, doesn't mean it's a good investment. You spend four and a half million dollars, make absolutely $92,000 on us. We don't want to be a part of this. And here's the other reason I don't want to be a part of Cave Springs. I've been here four meetings now. We've called the mayor a liar to his face, being recorded to all your residents. There are slights between council members. One wants to finish a sentence, the other one keeps going, no, finish, finish. It's not the right city for me. You guys have leaks in your water system. Wait until you have a school putting pressure on that thing. You got leaks now, wait until that happens. You have a sewer system that I agree with. That $6 million, you're trying to do something for land that needs it to become something. That's a great investment. You're trying to add four and a half million dollars to connect my, my toilet so it still works. I don't need your help. I'm fine. I don't want to be a part of the small town that's got a lot of problems and a lot of decisions that aren't fully vetted. Through this process, I've seen it's not fully vetted. So if you're not fully vetting a four and a half to a $11 million investment, you're not probably looking in real detail, the water problems that you have, the infrastructure issues that you have. You should go over the west and get some commercial space that'll actually give you cash registers. These people have told you time and time again, we don't want to be here. We don't want to be a part of this. The Saints do want to be here. But for some reason, you guys are, this whole idea of connecting, this connection, honestly, you should probably get rid of St. Dollar Downs, try to get Rogers to give you some of the land that's come and go and some, some commercial space. That would help you build up a real community, a real city. Right now, no community center, no library, you don't have the things to build a city. That's what you need to go do. Put some investment in that. Get some cash registers to help you. We've said we would listen to people. A council member said, I listen, I'm here, I'm, I hear you, right? But sometime between then and now, we've been jaded by some frustrating comments. I can't help you on that one. I apologize to most of you for those. They weren't from me, but I'm in that with everyone else, right? We're a team, we're all working together to do what we think is right. And I don't know if you guys have the right intentions in mind, making a decision this big for the residents of Cave Springs or the fabric of your town. The Saints are a perfect example of people that want to be in Cave Springs. That is the perfect harmony for Cave Springs. And if we didn't see what we saw here, I might've said, hey, you know what? I can get to this city hall in six minutes. I can't do that in Rogers. Your police department's, I've actually met them, they're nice. Your fire department's nice. Man, that would be great. But the actions I've seen out of this council doesn't want to make me a part of it because all I see is 70% tax hike or, sorry, watering, water pricing going up for me. Well, Mark's suggestion on the council was just put in rock. Well, I like grass and I have grass and it would cost me 60 grand to put in rock, but thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Other council members didn't think the water was changing. Well, it does. Those little things, I don't care about water. But the point of that one is it's so little that any one of you could just look it up. What does Rogers pay? What do I pay? Oh, they are going to get a water hike. But instead they go, well, I don't think water's going to be a big issue. That just shows me the lack of institutional knowledge of looking into things from a financial perspective, ins and outs, what do I get? You don't care what you get. What you get is the shiny toy that connects you. And I'm, I'm appalled to know that we are being jockeyed around as residents because of a developer requiring something, due to a lawsuit that has moved it all this way. Your hands get part of that when you know the underlying reasons why this is happening. You may say, not my problem, I'm just given the opportunity. I get that. But if someone gives me a, a, something that's probably above board, but not really, kind of slimy, I'm a part of that when I take that action, I take that transaction on, I go, I know he didn't do it the right way, but I get the opportunity. You're now complacent, you're now part of that situation. So I know that you guys all know that. So take that in because that is what people have talked about integrity, knowing how this is coming about is part of your integrity, taking it on, not knowing all the financial outflows, not knowing the responsibility you're going to have. All of that comes into play. So I would just tell you to think about that. Is that St. Valerie Downs connection so important that you want to take on a bunch of people that clearly don't want to be a part of the fabric of your community while you're going to displace the people that want to be a part of the fabric of your community? I'll leave that with you guys. Thank you.
Introduce myself or just start talking, introduce and address.
Hi, my name is John Stanton. My family has owned our property in Cave Springs since the early 90s. I'm here to express my deepest concerns over questionable and apparently deceitful actions observed so far in this proposed land swap. I would be remiss if I didn't state upfront that my wife Shannon and I greatly appreciate the time and effort shown to us by several members of this council and are most grateful for your hard work. Thank you. Unfortunately, it's easy to see why there are such high levels of frustration when there's not just a lack of information, but especially when there are even the slightest hits of impropriety. Cave Springs landowners were not notified of this proposed land swap. And yet some council members have told me they were led to believe that they, that we were. So how is this? Why such a discrepancy? At last week's work session, Councilman MC pointed out an inaccuracy in the map that was provided for the council to use in order for, to attain their vote to initially approve moving forward to this proposal. Specifically, a 40-acre development was omitted. Why this particular discrepancy? This is a significant oversight, not merely a simple mistake with minimal implications. Was this an intentional omission or was this an indication of being ill-prepared? And neither answer is acceptable. Included in last week's discussion of this 40-acre omission was a specific comment of street expansion. What's street expansion? The same street where not a single Cave Springs resident was notified? What a coincidence the close relationship these two discrepancies share. How can there be any expectation from us to accept assurances that Rogers has no plans to expand our street? I encourage you to reflect on how each of you were influenced to arrive at this point. I'm not convinced there weren't attempts to mislead. Last week, the comment was made that integrity was everything. I couldn't agree more and therefore insist that you immediately put a stop to this unacceptable behavior. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Thank you all for your time and your input.